Good afternoon, everybody. I want to welcome those of you who have happened to have joined us here today. City council meeting for Tuesday, March 5th. A little bit different this time because of some adjustments for spring break. There is a need for an executive session today, so city council will hold an executive session today for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding pending and contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under section 551, part 071 of the state government code. We are recessed until 2:00 P.M. Thank you. All righty, good afternoon again. We are together one more time finishing up our executive session and beginning the run home, if you will, of the city council meeting for today. What we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and get our formalities taken care of. I believe we are graced today by Pastor Reverend Paul Carpenter of the First Christian Church. He will be going before the Lord with us, and I'll ask City Councilman Steve Massengill to follow at that time with the pledges to the flags. If you stand, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the privilege and benefit of standing here in this place with these good people whom you've chosen to lead. Lord, we give you praise and thanks for all the ways that your providence has protected our community, especially in light of what's happening up north. We pray, Lord, that we would see this as a privilege and something to steward, that our freedoms and the healthful skies we have, the peace we have in our town, is a strength that should be used for us to help other people. Dear Lord, we pray a blessing over these whom you've chosen. We pray, Lord, for the decisions that are being made across our country and city today whom you are choosing. We pray that you would endow our leaders with wisdom, with ethics, with a desire to do what's right at all times. And Heavenly Father, we pray that today for this meeting, you would allow the best of wisdom to rise to the top, that the problems that need to be solved would be clearly defined, and the solutions be clearly seen. And after this meeting's over, may all people be able to shake hands, and our city be able to continue moving forward as a just society. We pray these things in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Will please join us in the pledges to the United States and the Texas flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you. You can please be seated at this time. Thank you Pastor Carpenter. Appreciate you being here with us. All righty, I believe we have two who have signed up today for our citizens' comment. That's the point where we are at this moment. All righty, I believe that the Jones family is represented. If you please come forward and give your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to address the council at 2:05 left, then you should hear a bell, and that will mean that you'll need to wind up your comments. I know you have a sidekick there, and I know you guys have signed up. You signed up separately, or you guys were hoping to do this? Any issues with that? No issues with it? Okay. So if both of you would give your name, your address, and we're listening.
My name is Brooks Jones. I live on 8613 Rochester Avenue, Lubbock, Texas.
Stace Jones, 690588 Lubbock, Texas.
We're here to on agenda 6.12, the proposition of bringing in property tax for childcare. We have 10 childcare facilities in Lubbock County. About half of those would qualify for this relief, and that is what it is to us, is a relief to help prevent further inflation on childcare.
Yeah, I mean, real simply put, we can get into all the logistics and go through all the history. I don't think that's what you want to hear today. But when you have more costs, parents pay that cost, and so you have to go up on the rate on parents. It's really that simple. The state of Texas put this out as proposition two. 67% of Lubbock voted to pass this because costs are rising, and it is getting harder and harder for families to afford childcare, which is creating workforce issues, and so this would help in that, keeping costs a little bit less.
Yeah, and it's governed by TWC, so there's a lot less administrative put onto the city. It just doesn't give them some taxes money.
Yeah, you'd have to qualify through them. So, any questions?
No, that's covered.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's Brooks, right?
Brooks, yes ma'am.
Brooks, okay, all right. Thank you all for being here. All righty, next we're going to take up our minutes from the February 13th and 19th council meetings, and 13th for the council meeting and 19th for the groundbreaking ceremony. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Not hearing any corrections, I'll go ahead and handle the vote. All of those in favor of the minutes, approval of the minutes for February 13th and 19th, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All righty, we've got some minutes passed. Okay. And now the council will be, will take up the consent agenda. The consent agenda and all the items that are listed as 5.1 through 5.18, and my information is that there are actually no actual polls. However, we will be removing item number 5.8, and it will not be taken up at this time. And that's all I have in that regard. There is a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 5 through 18, with the exception of 5.8.
Mayor Pro Temp, make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 5.1 through 5.18, save item 5.8.
All righty, we have a motion by Mr. Massengill, second by Ms. Martinez-Garcia. I'll call for the vote. All of those in favor of approving items 5.1 through 5.18, with exclusion of 5.8 of the consent agenda, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All righty, guys, we're halfway home. All righty. The next item that we have is item number six, and it comes as calls for a public hearing in accordance with chapter 214 of the Texas Local Government Code regarding local amendments to the National Model Codes, including the International Residential Code and the International Building Code. Before we open this public hearing, I want to give the council to receive an overview regarding this matter. I believe I saw Mr. Robbie coming for us. Mr. Atkinson, do you have anything to say before we go to him? All righty, take us away, Mr. Robbie.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Pro Temp and council members. For consideration, if they could get, there we go. For consideration today, items 6.1 through 6.11, our adoption of the 2021 International Code family and 2020 National Electrical Code, we're going to consider these all as one item, I think, so there will be one presentation for all of them. The Texas Local Government Code, chapter 214, which is Municipal Regulation of Housing and Other Structures, defines the National Model Code as a publication that is developed, promulgated, and periodically updated at the national level by organizations consisting of industry and government fire and building safety officials through a legislative or consensus process that is intended for consideration by units of government as local law. Additions published by the International Code Council and National Fire Protection Association, which is what we're considering today, are reviewed and updated on a three-year triennial cycle. Model codes are adopted at the state level in the Local Government Code, Occupations Code, and the Health and Safety Code. A municipality by state statute may establish procedures to adopt local amendments to these local adopted codes. Our Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board, which is one of our city-appointed boards, and their primary duties are to review and recommend any revisions, technical amendments, ultimately to you guys for consideration and adoption. This board met, over the past 18 months, starting in the fall of, I think, 2022, they met 12 times to review any changes and potential amendments to the code additions to be considered for adoption. The Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board members consist of two licensed professional engineers, a licensed architect, a licensed electrical, mechanical, and plumbing contractor, one of each, a residential contractor, a commercial contractor, a facilities manager, a multifamily property manager, a developer, and one citizen. Of course, staff acts as liaison for this committee, and we provide them with any materials that they need as far as amendments to the code, revisions, stuff that's come out. I really want to tip my hat. We've got, Gwen Davis is here, he's our chair of the board, but this board really just personified what a citizen-appointed board can do. When they come together, they work really hard, they put in a lot of their own time doing this, took a lot of things into consideration, consulted with a lot of resources. As a part of the review process, they set up work groups, and they were established consisting of licensed industry professionals who reviewed code additions specific to their field of expertise, with this information then presented to the board as a resource. The Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board voted unanimously in favor of any and all ordinances that are proceeded for consideration today. And I wanted just real quick to just mention that we go through audits about every five years. ISO will do audits, and they're done through third parties. Varus did our last one, and they come up with this Building Code Effectiveness Grading Schedule Score. When they look at our staff qualifications, they look at our locally adopted codes, there's a lot of factors that go into this. Ultimately, what this has done is ISO, all this actuarial and statistical data is given to insurance companies that determine the insurance rates for a local community. Our Building Code Effectiveness Grading Schedule, it assesses the building codes in effect in a particular community, as well as how the community enforces its building codes with a special emphasis on mitigation of losses from natural hazards. Municipalities with well-enforced, up-to-date codes demonstrate better loss experience, which can be reflected in lower insurance rates. The prospect of lessening catastrophe-related damage and ultimately lowering insurance costs provide an incentive for communities to stay up to date with their adopted building codes. The anticipated benefits are safer buildings, less damage, and lower insured losses from catastrophes. For consideration today, we're going to the 2021 International Building Code, the 2021 International Plumbing Code, the 2021 International Mechanical Code, the 2020 National Electrical Code, the 2021 International Residential Code, the 2021 International Fuel Gas Code, 2021 International Energy Conservation Code, and then we've got two new ones here. The 2021, these have never been adopted by ordinance in the city of Lubbock before. The 2021 International Existing Building Code and the 2021 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. And I just want to touch on those a little bit. Part of the reason we're doing that is by state statute in 2018, we were required to adopt the swimming pool and spa code. It was pulled out of the building code and the residential code, became a standalone code. So that's something that we really needed to do. And then the 2021 International Fire Code. I want to touch on, we're going from the 2015 series of codes to the 2021, so we're actually jumping a cycle so we become more current. I know this sounds like it's three years old already, but the 2024 codes have just came out, and we don't really even have access to them yet. And then the 2023 National Electrical Code, which the board was already reviewing these amendments when we started. So a lot of jurisdictions that are really, really ambitious will not even adopt the 2024s until probably late fall or early of next year. Implementing up-to-date building codes can save a community money and reduce insurance premiums, and can help when applying for federal grants. Adopting and enforcing up-to-date building codes not only reflects a jurisdiction's commitment to health and safety of its citizens, but also helps preserve building resilience and durability in the face of increasingly severe weather events. As a minimum safeguard, building codes establish a building safety and energy performance for years to come. So with that, if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All righty. What I'll do now is open the public hearing, and if there is anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed amendments to the National Models Code, if there's one, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Anyone wanting to speak or desiring to speak in opposition? Hearing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed amendments in the National Models Code? I know there's tons of you just chomping at the bit. Anyone choosing or desiring to speak in favor? Okay. Hearing none on that regard. I'll now close the public hearing, and what I want to go ahead and do is call for a motion on these items, and then we'll move forward and allow discussions and any questions at that time. That's okay. There are a motion to approve items numbers 6.1 through 6.11. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Now at this time, I allow anyone, I believe Mr. McBrier had either questions or discussions.
Yes, Robbie. Can you, since we have these new, the swimming pool and the international, is it existing building code that are the new ones?
Yes, sir.
Can you kind of give us a brief overview of those two?
Sure.
What those are going to be doing?
Right. And the swimming pool and spa code, and you're seeing this more and more with ICC, where we've had, and actually this is going to apply to both of these codes, where these provisions were written into the code previously. So your swimming pool and spa code requirements were in the International Residential Code, and they were in the International Building Code. And ICC has started doing this a few cycles back, where they're pulling this information out and making them a standalone code. Now, the 2018 International Pool and Spa Code was the first one that was state mandated, where the state said, if you are going to regulate pools in your jurisdiction, you have to follow this code. So this is one that really by state statute we needed to do. The existing building code is something that in the, back in the 2012 cycle, I think, was the last time we had that in the building code, and this allows us a tremendous amount of flexibility with redevelopment. Because sometimes you have a building that it's just not really feasible to do certain things to it, and what the existing building code has always done is let you take into consideration, okay, this is an existing building, so what can we do to make it safe for the public, but still have some flexibility? Those provisions were pulled out of the International Building Code in 2012, and it's always been a standalone code, but we used to reference that, and we really can't reference it anymore. This is something that a lot of jurisdictions adopt for that reason, is if you've got any kind of redevelopment going on, it can really help with allowing that project to continue and making sure it's safe for the public.
So my question is, with regard to the existing building code, does that make it more difficult for someone who has an existing building, or is it just, is it really just to pull it out and have it as a standalone?
It makes it easier.
Actually easier?
It does. It allows some things that generally with a new building, if you were constructing a new building, you'd be required to do certain things to that. The existing building code, and again, it's an international code, it's not in any way lessening the life safety requirements of that building, but it's taking into account, you may have a building where, how can we use this? What can we continue to do with it, but not require it to meet all the requirements that a brand-new building would? So it's something that's definitely, definitely helpful, makes things a little bit easier on a project that's looking at, you know, redevelopment.
So does it kind of balance the cost of the requirements against the safety considerations?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I do, Mr. Robbie, if you'll help me out, and I know the one particular code made reference to swimming pool and spa code. In light of the fact that we're beginning to see a lot of the splash pad, the splash pad movement, does this also cover them within this code, or is there something else?
Yeah, so splash pads generally, and when you're looking at safety, you know, and electrical hazards, different things, a lot of those requirements are going to carry over like you would see on a swimming pool.
Okay.
As far as those safety issues, so yes, they would be.
Okay. Thank you. I was thinking so, but I wasn't sure. Ms. Joy.
Mr. Wallace. I understand we run behind in terms of the years, but do we try to enforce these changes before we adopt them?
No, ma'am, we really, you know, we can't, when our stuff is codified and stuff, we have to follow those ordinances, so we've never, we really, until we get those adopted by ordinance, then we can't, you know, we have to enforce the codes that we're under, which we're currently under the 2015 series.
Well, that was my point. We're under the 2015 codes, and those have changed substantially, but we haven't gotten them adopted yet. The new, the new changes are not adopted, and so it's important that we get this done. You told me earlier that you felt like we might kind of catch up a little bit on this cycle, I hope, so that we're not always eight years behind, nine years.
Yes, ma'am, and that's why we were initially looking at going, we generally do these in the order that came out, at looking at the 18s, and we decided to, and staff has done a tremendous job, Gilbert, Quan, and Whitley Green, building official and assistant building official of, you know, rather than adopting the 18s and being in the same situation we're in with being behind, we went ahead and jumped to the most current code cycle that was out at the time. And I'll be honest with you, I've talked to our auditor that did our last ISO audit, and with the, once these ordinances are done, and I sent them to him, it's going to impact our Building Code Effectiveness Grading Schedule in a positive way and actually get it better, just with this simple adoption of these.
So which, which years is our Model Codes Committee working on now?
Well, they worked really, really hard last year, so we've kind of given them a couple of months of a break, but we're jumping right into the 2024s. And again, we're still trying to get copies of those ourselves. You'll see, like, the North Central Texas Council of Governments in the metroplex, they'll spend this whole year reviewing the 2024s before they even put out their recommended amendments to it. But my plan is to not get this far behind and start this fall with the 2024s, so we're ahead of the game.
So what happened to 2018, 2021, those years?
As far as with...
In terms of adoption?
Well, we...
We're not there yet.
Well, this will get the 2021s adopted.
Okay.
These ordinances, yes, we will be under the most current, well, the 2024s came out in January, so, you know, we're close.
We're closing the gap.
We're closing the gap a lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't want to go without recognizing Mr. Davis, who's here with us and who's actually leading a team that's, as you had indicated, Mr. Robbie, to make sure that these things are, are getting put in place. So anything else you'd like to share with us regarding the board? I just appreciate the fact that he's here today.
Yeah, I tell you, the board did a great job of representing their industry, whether they were design professionals or contractors, and the thing that I was most impressed with and proud of was life safety was the common theme. Everybody wants to do their stuff right, you know, and you have a right, when you take your family out somewhere, or you're living in your home, to know that the city is doing everything they can to make that as safe as possible.
If nothing else, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All of those in favor of items 6.1 through 6.11, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in oppose of that, please same sign. It carries 6 to 0. Thank you. All righty, we have one remaining item, item number 612 on our books. And as regards the first read, with regard to the ordinance, chapter 18, and the taxation, if there's no presentation?
No, ma'am, I'd be glad to just do a quick explanation if council would like. This does require two things for you to consider within this one ordinance.
Okay, please help us.
Okay, thank you. Go kind of quick, you've already heard, this is in response to the passage of Proposition 2, that was voted upon last November. We're now running to the part of implementing it. So Proposition 2 and the related Senate bill, number 1145, that creates the ability for a local taxing jurisdiction to authorize an exemption from all or a portion of property taxes for a qualifying childcare facility. So what you have before you today, and if you're in your packet, you can look on page 424, we have provided an estimate of the fiscal impact, should you choose to do this. According to the Lubbock Central Appraisal District, it's estimated that there are $25 million, that's an appraised value, it's not a business value, but a property value, of qualifying childcare facilities in the city that could qualify for this exemption. Council, if you choose to authorize the exemption, you have to authorize at least an exemption of 50% of value. You can go all the way up to 100, you cannot go less than 50. So your financial analysis goes as follows. At a 50% exemption, the cost to the general fund would just be $57,042. So double that at 100%, and the cost is $114,000. So council, if you choose to do this, first, we would need a motion to consider and to approve the ordinance, and with that motion, the amount of the exemption you wish to put in there, somewhere between 50 and 100. Now take any questions you may have.
Any questions with Mr. Atkinson? Ms. Joy?
It says exemption for qualifying childcare facilities. What are the qualifications for a childcare facility in order to have an exemption?
Yes, two definitions that are written into the statute. A childcare facility means that it's licensed by the Health and Human Services Commission, and then it provides a list of what services they must offer to meet that, assessment, care, training, education, custody, treatment, et cetera, for a child who is not related by blood marriage or adoption to the owner or the operator of the facility. That's definition of childcare facility. Qualifying childcare facility goes further to say the owner or the operator of which participates in the Texas Workforce Commission's Texas Rising Star Program for that facility, and at which at least 20% of the total number of children enrolled receives subsidized childcare services through that same program.
And who is responsible for making sure that a childcare facility has those qualifications?
It will go back through those state agencies to meet those qualifications, and then the actual exemptions are, of course, calculated by the Lubbock Central Appraisal District.
So 50% is $57,042, 100% exemption is 114.
Yes, ma'am.
142. I guess I have a question, Mayor Patterson-Harris, for the Jones.
All righty.
One or both?
I think they're a pair. Come on, Stace.
They're a pair, yeah. I know that you said originally, when you were talking to us, about what would keep you from having to raise...
Yes.
...what a parent pays for a child. Tell me right now, if I had one child, and let's say, under the age of six or five, what do you charge now for that?
$950 a month.
How much?
$950 a month.
Okay, and so I'm wondering how much impact this is going to make for you, is what I'm trying to figure out.
It helps. Our biggest factors are payroll and property, and so it does help. There's other things that we're also working on to help with that cost through organizations like Texas, Texas AEYC, and then also TLCCA, which is focused on childcare providers. And one of those is funding from the state, and another one of those is some choice options for students. So those are things that would help drive that cost, this being one of the major factors.
And also, so to get that 20%, you do have to take government subsidy children, which that's in our heart, but they do not reimburse you at that 950 either, so that's even a lower rate that we're actually getting paid.
And what is that rate?
That would be...
Depends on your star level.
It does.
So it is a rising star, so based off certain performance measures that you meet, you get different reimbursement rates.
So you can get down to 70% of your rate, all the way up to 90%. 90% only on infants. So, but pretty much, you can get 70 or 80%.
How many children do y'all have in your business?
1,300 students.
1,300, okay. Well, God bless you.
Thank you.
Anyone have, Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you guys for being here today. I think my question is, and it's not for you guys to be targeted at you guys, but just in general, not super familiar... not super familiar with all the exact specifics of the bill that was passed, but, you know, I think the ultimate goal was to, to help parents who are out paying childcare to reduce the cost, you know, with inflation on the rising cost. So was there anything in any of the bill stuff that prevents childcare agencies from just pocketing their extra money and not passing down that benefit to the families who are actually paying the childcare cost? Is it going to be that we have that problem where only the business owners benefit, and a bill that we pass to help everybody doesn't benefit those actual people?
Well, I can say a couple of things, the main, one being competition, competitive rates and pricing, that's the main. Like, for instance, in Lubbock, nine fifty, it sounds like a lot, we're low for what we actually compare to other cities and other, other parts of the state. Average, I think, is like eighteen hundred dollars a month right now in major metroplex areas, going as high as twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars a month in certain places. So we're still low in that space. Right, so that, that would be the main avenue of that.
I'd say very direct, no, there's nothing that would prevent that, except that why would I pay that extra money to go there if I can get good quality care down the street for a little bit less?
So choice.
So it allows that choice to happen, and that's, that's the beauty of the market.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I want to clarify, that was no way targeted at you guys. That was just a question I have in general. I just hope that that's not the occurrence that we see moving forward, you know, even across the state, that that's a pocketed for a business owner and, and not passed down to families. I mean, it needs to benefit everybody.
We were actually very advocates for this bill in the first place, so we were trying.
The Senator was.
Yes, so we, before it did get pulled out, where the biggest portion of this would have been public ISDs, that would have been the biggest contributor, but they're exempt from the exemption. So we're trying to at least get what we can to help, and that's what we're.
Yeah, and if you have time, we could definitely sit down, I can show you the numbers and the data.
Yeah, I love it. Thank you all for answering that. I know that was a big question, and like I said, it wasn't just for you guys and y'all's business, just in general. Thank you.
Ms. Joy.
My question may have just left me. What? What did you all ask for from the legislature?
So we're a part of a group that sits across Texas, what we ask for is a hundred percent.
Okay.
Whether you qualify through subsidies or not, that's what we ask for. We have a workforce issue across the state, and it's pulling people out of childcare into unregulated and licensed care, and that's a major problem. So we visited with, with that portion of it, we're very close to the unregulated and licensed director there. And so that's becoming a major, major issue, and so what we're trying to do is trying to keep costs more affordable, more manageable right now.
And so what the legislature did was give the cities some flexibility somewhere, not less than fifty, but all the way up to one hundred.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia.
For the vote? Or for motion?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Are you making the motion?
I'm making the motion to approve this at a hundred percent.
I'll second that.
All righty, we have a motion to approve this item and a second. Nothing further, all those in favor of approving this item, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All righty, we've got that passed. I don't see anything else or any other business that we need to attend to other than telling everybody that it reminded you that spring break is next week. So make sure you are out there taking care of yourself and your young people, and we'll see you back here on whatever date that is, five, the twenty-sixth of March, for a little bit more council business. Thank you for being with us, we'll adjourn.